Go ahead and start. Begin the public hearing for a proposed renewal of a municipal solid waste landfill permit for the Dothen Sanitary Landfill. Today is May 22, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. We are at the Dothen Civic Center on 126 North St. Andrew Street in Dothen, Alabama, 36303. Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Tom Burks. I am the designating hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing for the following proposed permit action for the Dothen Sanitary Landfill located at 1290 Burkett Road in Dothen, Houston County, Alabama, 36303. The proposed renewal and modification is Municipal Solid Waste Landfill Permit Number The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit actions. In addition to oral testimony, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the comment period. The department has requested your comments, and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On April 16, 2025, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who have previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. A copy of the permit and the email distribution list will be entered into the record for these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit application, preliminary determination, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery, as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public, and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summary of such statements may be presented orally. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before making a final permit decision. Please be advised, the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making permit decisions, and must make the determinations only on whether the permit application applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to aid in body's legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department's staff to clarify points and to better develop an understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as to question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit applications. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to the comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit actions. You do not have to make oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through the postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit actions and develop responses to comments for the proposed permit. The hearing record, final permit determinations, and response to comments will be posted on the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now, let's move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony as follows. First, the representative of the department's land division. I don't believe we have anyone from the landfill or elected officials here. And then, all remaining members of the public will be heard in order in which they registered, and then those that registered on-site at this hearing. And now, I'll recognize Ms. Isabel Bella to present a statement on behalf of the department's land division.
Good evening. My name is Isabel Bella, and on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, we thank you for your participation in the permitting process for the City of Dothen Sanitary Landfill, Permit Number 3506. Three Notch Group, formerly CDG Engineers and Associates Inc., on behalf of the City of Dothen, has submitted to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management an application to renew and modify its solid waste disposal facility permit for the City of Dothen Sanitary Landfill. The City of Dothen Sanitary Landfill is located in Section 17, Township 3 North, Range 27 East in Dothen in Houston County, Alabama. The proposed modification would expand the total acreage of the facility to 506.67 acres. The modification also increases the municipal solid waste disposal area to 74.1 acres. The construction and demolition disposal area would increase to 14.1 acres. The permity may accept for disposal at the municipal solid waste disposal area non-hazardous waste, non-infectious, putrescible and non-putrescible wastes, including but not limited to municipal solid waste, industrial waste, commercial waste, construction and demolition waste, rubbish, sludge, and special waste approved by ADM. The permity may accept for disposal at the construction and demolition waste disposal area, non-putrescible and non-hazardous construction and demolition waste and rubbish as defined by ADM Admin Code 335-13-1.03. The service area for the City of Dothen Sanitary Landfill would remain Houston County, City of Dothen, and the City of Headland. The maximum average daily volume of waste disposed at the City of Dothen Sanitary Landfill would remain 400 tons per day. The City of Dothen has also submitted a request for variance from ADM Admin Code 335-13-4-22 to C2, requiring that the maximum final grade of the final cover system not exceed 25% or 4:1 slopes. For the 20.5-acre MSW expansion area, permity has been approved to construct a final cover system with 3:1 final slopes. The City of Dothen also submitted a request for variance from ADM Admin Code 335-13-4-22 to 1B, which requires waste to be confined to as small an area as possible within a single working face. The permity has been approved to operate two working faces, the first for the placement of MSW waste and the second for the placement of construction and demolition waste. In addition, both working faces must be confined to as small an area as possible. Based on our review of the permit application, the department has made a preliminary determination that the proposed renewal and modification would be in compliance with the applicable state and federal solid waste disposal requirements, and thus protective of public health and the environment. The proposed permit includes the following conditions. Upon renewal, the permit would be valid for a 10-year period. The permity would maintain a composite liner as described in the permit and permit application, including a leachate system. The permity would continue to conduct groundwater monitoring semi-annually. The permity would continue to conduct explosive gas monitoring quarterly. The permity would, at all times, properly operate and maintain the facility and all systems in accordance with the application of the permit. The permity would maintain the integrity of the final cover system throughout the life of the permit and post-closure period, and the permity would obtain the approval of ADM for any change or modification to the facility or a system which might otherwise result in non-compliance with the permit or ADM's administrative code. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide an opportunity to receive public comment regarding the application and proposed permit. Representatives from ADM held a public engagement session immediately prior to tonight's hearing to provide clarity on any questions the public may have on this permitting process. The department welcomes your input to this process and will consider all technical comments prior to making a final decision concerning the issuance of this permit. A written response will be provided to each commenter and to those requesting specific notice of our decision. Thank you again for participating in this hearing.
We will now proceed. Can you hear me? We will now proceed to the receipt of comments from members of the public. As indicated in the public notice for this hearing, oral testimony for each registered speaker is limited to seven minutes. If anyone has prepared a statement that cannot be presented in a five-minute timeframe, please use your time for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department in writing for placement in record. First, I will recognize David Lutter. Please stand up. Please take up the microphone and clearly restate your name in the name of any interest or organization that you represent. Please speak clearly into the microphone to ensure an accurate record of your testimony can be referred to. Please also remember that this is not a quiz.
Thank you. My name is David Lutter. I'm an attorney out of Tallahassee, Florida.
Can y'all hear his microphone?
No.
I think you got the microphone. He might even hear clapping. And just because it says green doesn't mean that's...
Yeah. My name is David Lutter. Is that better? I'm an attorney from Tallahassee, Florida. I represent a number of individual landowners who border on or live near the proposed landfill expansion. My clients recently challenged the city commission's approval, granting of local host government approval of the landfill expansion. That decision, or that the board's decision, was appealed to certi court. Certi court granted judgment in favor of the city. That judgment is now on appeal to the Court of Civil Appeals. The premise of that appeal is that the board did not do several things correctly. And if, in fact, it turns out that the board did not do these things correctly, then ADM will have no authority to grant the permit. That was essentially the decision in the prior case. Lewis versus Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Is that thing necessary to be up here? Thanks. In the 2001 decision, excuse me, 21 decision of Lewis versus Alabama Department of Environmental Management, the court essentially said, if the board fails to perform its duty properly, then ADM can't issue the permit. There are a number of things wrong with the board's decision. First and foremost is that they did not do what the statute tells them to do. The statute tells them to approve or disapprove a new solid waste management site or a modified existing solid waste management site. What they, in fact, did was approve a facility boundary of 506 acres without mentioning anything about solid waste management sites that were being approved. That's very close to what happened in the Lewis case. In that case, again, the board approved a facility boundary when, at the time, the statute required them to approve an ADM permit application. The court said they failed to do what the statute told them to do. There are a number of other issues which I have identified in a written submission today to ADM, mostly having to do with the fact that the 506 acres includes a large amount of acres over 100, I think it's 200 acres, west, east of Ennis Road, on which there are no solid waste management facilities. To the west of Ennis Road, there's a large amount of acres which do not include a solid waste management facility. So the board should not have approved all that acreage unless they were approving a solid waste management facility. The amount of acreage that the proposed municipal solid waste management site is somewhere in the neighborhood of 20.5 acres, and for the construction and demolition site, it's 14.1 acres. That's, the 506 acres is way beyond what's needed to be approved for what's proposed. So for that reason, the board's decision, we think, will be overturned. There were also a number of notice issues that they didn't follow. In fact, one of the issues they didn't, or one of the requirements they didn't follow was for the board to hold a public hearing on this proposal. The board did not hold a public hearing. The city held a public hearing. City officials presided over that public hearing. Only one board member was even in attendance at the public hearing. The statute says the board has to approve, the board has to hold the public hearing. That, I think, is going to be overturned by the, the board's decision is going to be overturned by the Court of Civil Appeals once they decide. I did have a technical question that I presented to ADM staff at the meeting prior to this hearing and didn't get any really response to it, other than that I could raise the question here and get a response from ADM's response to comments. And that is this. ADM rules say that for the purpose of designing the bottom elevation of the proposed cell, the applicant shall measure the groundwater elevation at the location of the proposed cell or liner system. My first question is, based on the data submitted by the applicant, it looks to me like only Monitoring Well 12, Pizometer Number 21, and Pizometer Number 22 are in the location of the proposed cell or liner system. Every other point that was used to develop groundwater elevation data is not within the footprint of the proposed cell or liner system. So that means that those measuring sites are the only ones, in my mind, that are eligible to be considered for developing the groundwater elevation data. The same rule, which is 335-13-4-11, Perine 2 Paragraph A, says, "The applicant shall obtain a minimum of two measurements taken during each of the three consecutive months of February, March, and April, or as otherwise approved by the department, with no two measurements taken within a 12-day period." For those three monitoring sites that I mentioned, Monitoring Well 12, Pizometer 21, and Pizometer 22, there is not sufficient data presented to cover three consecutive months during the months of February, March, and April, which means that the only way that the department can approve this application is based on the clause which says, "Or otherwise, or as otherwise approved by the department." So apparently, the department is satisfied that there's other data presented that satisfies them that they can disregard the otherwise applicable two measurements taken during each of three consecutive months of February, March, and April. I'd like to know how it is that the department is satisfied that the other data in the application is adequate to disregard the otherwise required provision of consecutive months of February, March, and April.
Let me catch you off there. You've been talking for about 10 minutes. If you had a longer statement, I know you're going to submit something, but for oral comments, I think we've run out of time unless you have the short...
Now, this is my, I was told I could get, we were all told we could get answers at the meeting before, and I didn't get an answer. And I want to make sure this gets on the record and answered. I want to make sure it's understood.
Yes, sir. But we also give you a time limit. We express a stipulation that if there's a lot, if you need more time, you need to submit a written statement.
Well, let me ask you, how many presenters you have here tonight?
That's not relevant?
Oh, it sure is.
It is not? You've been given a time limit. We've let you have considerably more than the time limit. Been gracious to ask you, you can summarize your statement or submit your comment written because we know you're going to submit it written. If you can make a brief statement summarizing any other...
What time do you expect to end this hearing?
I expected to give you seven minutes, and I've given you well over 10.
I'm sorry. What time do you expect to end this meeting?
I would say there was no expectation of what time we were going to end. However, I've given you seven minutes. I've asked you to finish up your testimony and let the next speaker speak.
I'm happy to let the next speaker speak, but if you're going to end this hearing in a half hour and let only five people speak, you're not doing a good service. You ought to have planned to stay here for up to two hours and allow as many people to speak as can be heard in that two-hour period. I mean, if we got five speakers and you give them seven minutes, that's 35 minutes. You go home in 35 minutes? I mean...
Happy to finish your statement, Mr. Lutter.
Yeah, I'll finish it. Give me an answer for my questions in your response to comments about how you justify avoiding the default requirement for bottom elevation data. Thank you.
Michael Delvecchio. Please step up. Restate your name and the city of town in the interest of your presentation.
Okay. My name is Michael Delvecchio. I live at 151 Delvecchio Lane, which my land touches the expansion of the landfill. I represent myself and my family. I do find it problematic and actually sad that our six commissioners and our mayor could not be here tonight, even though they voted to expand this, which means, which means they don't care what the people say. In operation, we've been there for many years. When this landfill's been in operation, we've had to deal with odors beyond what you can, I know, and many here have driven by a landfill, and you smell it, and you rush by the landfill so you don't have to smell it, and you close your windows and you shut your doors, and you hope to get by quickly. But we have to deal with this because we live there, and we've had to deal with it many years when it's in operation. And it's not just a sewage smell or a rotting garbage smell. Sometimes it's a chemical smell. It just depends on the day and what's actually being poured onto the landfill. We also deal with fugitive dust, and when I say fugitive dust, there's something in the dust, because when it lands on our cars, we've all had dealt with flies before, and you know, you'll have a few flies land on your car. But when this fugus, when this dust from the landfill lands on our cars, we will have thousands and thousands of flies that land on the car, because there's something in the dust that attracts them. Now, I can go wash my car and pull it right back out there, or my pickup truck, and the flies will be gone because I've taken care of the dust. So we've been dealing with the odors, we've been dealing with the fugitive dust, also buzzards. We raise Angus cattle on our property, on our farm, and we have had, you can't even count the buzzards that are in the sky that live on the landfill, and they live in our trees because our property is right next to it. There's hundreds and actually maybe even thousands of buzzards, and we've got pictures of it. My dad's going to bring them in a minute. But our calves, if our calf doesn't get up off the ground when it's born, the buzzards are there to pick its eyes out and to start eating it from the rear end. We've had many of them. We've actually got pictures, and we'll give that to you, document. But that's something we've been dealing with, and we, when we see a cow that's about to be, to give birth, we make sure that we put her as close as we can to the house, or we're going to lose that calf. And these cows are Angus, they're registered Angus cows. Most people think that a buzzard is going to go after something that's dead, but when there's nothing to eat, they live at the landfill, but there's really a lot, not a lot to eat, they're going to go look for something else. And a baby calf that can't get up right off the bat is going to be one they pick out. Also coyotes, there are packs of coyotes that live on the landfill. They come through Gulf Creek. There's a fence around the landfill, but they access our property through Gulf Creek, and you can hear them at night howling on the landfill property, especially when it's in operation. And they access our property, and they end up taking a lot of our calves. Something I want to read to you from ADM, April 6, 2010. This was given to Phil Davis, Chief Solid Waste Branch Land Division, from Stephanie Carter, Hydrogeology Section Groundwater Branch Land Division. And if you look down, you should have it in Montgomery. You can pull this back up. Line seven, it says, in her finding, in their findings, "Representative concentrations of thallium, cadmium, cobalt, nickel, silver, vanadium," some of these I've never heard of, "in source area soil samples exceed the levels protective of the groundwater resource of POE 1." So in other words, the groundwater is already contaminated from what they've already done. Representative concentrations of antimony, arsenic, which I'm sure none of us want to drink, beryllium, cadmium, lead, nickel, silver, and thallium in source area will, source area soil samples exceed the levels protective of surface water tributary to Gulf Creek. Gulf Creek runs through our property, it also runs through their property, and it runs for miles past their property. So not only is this contaminated, and ADM is saying it's contaminated, but it's contaminating downstream into many people's houses, many people's yards, many people's properties. And then for line nine, it says, "The department agrees with the recommendation that commercial and construction workers at the site limit their exposure to the surface soil utilizing protective safety gear." There are two people that I know that worked for the city, and they were on that landfill during those years. And I gave them this, and I said, "Did you ever wear protective gear while you're on this site?" And they said, "No, we didn't know anything about it." So what I want to say is, if this has not been taken care of in the past, and they're asking to expand this, the contamination of the water, the contamination of the ground, the fact that you have to have protective gear while you're on this site, and we're going to expand it, we're only going to make this worse. And so I'm asking you, and I'm asking ADM to look into this, and the EPA to look into this, and what can we do about, I don't know if we can fix this, but we definitely don't need to expand this. Thank you.
Question for you. Were you reading from a publication? I have no, I don't know where you're reading from. Is this a publication? Or is it? Give it to him. Are you submitting this with the...
I submitted.
Okay. Whoever takes these...
Yes.
I recognize David Delvecchio.
My name is David Delvecchio. My family and I own approximately something over 1,000 lineal feet next to the dump, which you affectionately call the landfill. Bam! 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 6:30 in the morning, we hear that when the dump is in process, and you go, and you wake up because you're startled, and if it was one time, it'd be okay, but it goes on all day, every day, for five days, and sometimes part of Saturday. And they're not supposed to be there until 7:00, 6:30 in the morning, you hear it, and you hear it year after year after year. And then they... And then they kill your animals and they tell you that there are, are no buzzards anywhere around your property. And I will give you, anyone who wants it, literature and show you everything I'm going to say. Everything has been documented. We've been to court over this at least five times, six times. The city went against us when we said shut it down because we don't want a five-hundred-and-six-acre dump in our backyard. The city went against us. We went to court. Three judges ruled against the city in our favor. The city didn't like it. They took it back to court. Judges ruled in our favor. City didn't like it, took it to Alabama Supreme Court. Alabama Supreme Court ruled in our favor. And here we are again, doing it over and over again. It would appear to me that somebody is doing something because they have a personal interest in it. No one would fight that hard. I took the existing mayor to lunch and he and I were good acquaintances. And I said to him, Mark, why don't you put an incinerator in here instead of making a four-hundred-and-twenty-six-foot-high dump which exceeds the size that you're going to do now? Because it's already high enough. Instead of making the city be referred to as Dothan, the Circle City, it's going to be soon called Dothan the Dump City. You're right near A.Com., you're right near the hospital. What happens if a fire occurs? If a fire occurs and you can't put it out? Birmingham, Alabama, twenty-twenty-two December, had a fire in their dump, which is just north of Birmingham and Moody, and hasn't put out even today. Fire's still burning. What about that? What happens if that happens here? My son mentioned the calves. It's really hard when you spend lots of money and time raising something and you decide to see something grow and all of a sudden it's dead in front of you and there's nothing you can do about it because the city you live in, the place you love, has decided it doesn't matter. When I graduated from college, I left the country before graduation because I had to go overseas and serve my country. And when I got back stateside, I was looking forward to the pursuit of happiness according to my constitution. The city decided my, my happiness didn't matter. My property is worth probably a million dollars. That's a fair estimate. We have fifty-four acres. We're on the city street. We're in the city limits. And it really doesn't matter because I'm fighting against the same people that I have spent time with, I've gone to church with, I've gone to their homes, I've spent time with them, they spend time with me. It really doesn't matter because somebody's got an agenda and they think that we need to have this. When Huntsville, a city of similar size as Dothan, has an incinerator and they use the heat from the incinerator to heat places in the city. It's been very effective and they're similar size as we are. I mentioned that to the mayor when I took him to lunch and he said to me, and I quote, "I wish you had mentioned to this, I wish I had known this before." I said, "You have only been in office two weeks. I'm mentioning it to you now. You could make a difference. Instead of making a huge dump so that Dothan's known as the Dump City instead of the Circle City, you could do this. We can make an incinerator and it's not going to cost a whole lot of money to do this and do it right." And by the way, I find that the incinerator serves the city of Huntsville well. It burns over ninety-five percent of the trash to nothing and what is left ends up becoming dust in a pile and they put it in a dump. Wouldn't it be smart? Instead of making a dump five, four-hundred-and-twenty-six feet high, all these acres so that people see it from everywhere and building an incinerator so we burn it to nothing and then dump a little bit of ash into the dump that is affectionately called by many the landfill. I would like to share this with as many people as would like to have it. And I'd like to have my statements in your hands. And I'm done. Would you like these?
Someone takes them, I don't take them.
Who takes them?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Would anyone here beside me like these? Thank you.
And I recognize Deborah Walton.
Hello, sir, and everyone. My name is Deborah Walton and I'm about to be a resident at fifteen-fifteen Weber Road. And when I was fencing in my fence around the land, I got in there to the spring that runs right through my land and it had a smell to it. I didn't know nothing about it. Like I said, I'm about to move here and that's where I'm at. And when I looked at the area view of my land, you know, the water line that goes from the bridge for the freshwater. But like I said, I have that smell going through there. And I was about to take a, a check of the land, but since I heard about this, I decided to come down here and make my voice heard. And that's about all I have to say, sir.
Since there are no more, no further registered speakers, please be advised that unless otherwise notified, the public comment period will end at five o'clock P.M. on Thursday, May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. All comments must be received at offices of the department in Montgomery by that time. After consideration of all oral and written comments, the department will make its determinations regarding proposed permit action and prepare responsive to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your petition and patience this evening. This hearing is adjourned.